We're going to call our meeting to order, the Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. It's 9:01. It doesn't look like Pastor Eddie's here, so I'm going to ask Mr. Kenny Downs to go to the podium and say the prayer, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Commissioner Pickens. But everyone rise, please.
Let us pray. Our grace heavenly fathers, we come to you today. We pray that you give the commissioners guidance to lead us in the direction we need to go for our county today. We have an awful lot of important issues that come before this commission. We just pray that you'll be with each one of them as they make these decisions. We praise thanks your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Downs. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. I'd be remiss not to say, "Go Gators."
Go Gators!
Yes, we made it to the College World Series last night. I say "we" because I'm a Gator fan, but we are proud of our Gators, and I know that doesn't sit well with everyone in the room, but it does for most of us. So, I do want to let you know that we're going to try to move our agenda pretty fast today. We are going to be deliberate, but we have a project out at Water Management that is in the short list right now, and we are all going to try to go out there and support that project with them, but we're going to take our time, and it's nothing too major right now. Commissioners, item number two on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens.
Is that for all three of the minutes?
It was item two, yes. It was all three were...
Okay.
Okay. Do you understand that, too? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. Commissioner Goddard, proclamation Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week. Ms. Crowe, if you could meet, come on up and meet Commissioner Goddard at the podium, please.
This is Putnam County, proclamation number 2017-14, Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week. Whereas the anniversary of the birth of Helen Keller, the most accomplished, respected, and renowned deaf-blind American in our history falls on June 27th and on June 22nd, 1984. President Reagan issued proclamation 5214 designating the last week of June as Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week. And whereas deaf-blindness is one of the most severe of all disabilities, with respect to some 40,000 Americans are derived of two primary senses. And whereas the rubella epidemic of 1960s, along with other pathologies, has resulted in deaf-blindness for approximately 6,000 of our children. And whereas, because of the severity of deaf-blindness, the cost of educating, training, and rehabilitating persons who are deaf and blind is high in comparison with other disabilities. And whereas this high cost causes many service agencies to be reluctant to serve deaf-blind persons, thus inhibiting the independence and self-sufficiency of such persons and frequently resulting in their placement in custodial institutions. And whereas although the Helen Keller National Center and its network and regional deaf-blind centers serve a portion of this population, inadequate education, training, rehabilitation services to the deaf-blind population represents a terrible waste of human lives and resources, imposing a high economic cost on the nation. And whereas it is the county's interest to prevent this waste of human resources, foster independence, create independency for employment, and maximize the ability to achieve among our deaf-blind citizens. And whereas these objects can be accomplished only through increased public awareness of and attention to the needs, abilities, potential contributions to society of persons who are both deaf and blind. And whereas it is the highly appropriate to publicize the needs, abilities, and potential of all deaf-blind persons and simultaneously to recognize Helen Keller not only as a beacon of courage and hope for our nation, but also as a symbol of what is possible for deaf-blind persons to achieve. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners does hereby support recognizing June 24th through 30th, 2017, as Heller Keller, Helen Keller Deaf/Blind Awareness Week in Putnam County, and call upon its citizens to observe such week with appropriate recognition ceremonies and activities done, ordered, and adopted this 13th day of June 2017, Putnam County Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Goddard, do you move that?
I move that we...
Second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard. We have a proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. All right. Don't leave. I want to talk to you for a minute. Introduce who's with you today, please. Ms. Darlene.
I want to thank you for making this a proclamation. Martin Muggins had already done that nationally thing, and it's recognized all across the country. What I wanted to do is just share a little bit about what I think about Helen Keller and how she was a woman that seized upon opportunities. In 1925, she spoke at the Lions Club Convention in Ohio, and she shared that opportunities were like capricious ladies. They would knock at the door, but if you don't answer it quick enough, those ladies will move on to the next. Helen Keller, too often, we look lonely at that closed door, and we fail to see the open one that has the opportunity. Now, when I think about Helen Keller, before I began to recognize, re-identified myself as a deaf-blind person in 2010, I always thought of her as that wild, angry child in America Walker. But now, since I know more about her senacity, her spirit to go and do whatever she could to continue to be independent. And I also think about what she would be like today just to experience the technology out there that is empowering those who are blind and/or deaf to be able to communicate with the world around them, to be able to accomplish what they chose, choose to do on the job, in the community, in school. There is a program called the National Deaf/Blind Equipment Dispersment Program. This program offers technology to those who have combined vision and hearing loss to help them with communication access, and the equipment is given to them free. The equipment is Apple product, iPhone, iPad, MacBook. It also is Windows, desktop, software, alert system, and landline phone. And for many who rely on sign language, they require a phone that is called VRS, which is Video Relay Services. So, the Helen Keller National Center in New York is the institute that distributes that program here in Florida. And I recently just received a MacBook and a new browser display through that program. And I am excited about it because I want to use it on the next Florida Coordinating Council for the Deaf and the Hard of Hearing board council meeting. The quarterly meeting is in August. And for this meeting, which by the way, the governor appointed me to in 2012.
Congratulations, yes.
And I was reappointed this past year, and my term will expire in 2020. I have found so many rewarding accommodations and things that would be able to help those who are deaf and hard of hearing. On this board, there are individuals who are hard of hearing and deaf, rely on sign language, and I am the only person who is visually impaired. So, the state provides accommodation on this board for each of us to look in our laptops to a website that provides communications access, real-time transmission, also known as CART. A captionist will take, like a court reporter, into a machine which goes right onto a website so that each of us can read the conversation as it's being spoken so that we can be professional on that council, and we can understand what is said and make decisions that is pertinent to the situation. So, I, on the other hand, can see it on my computer because I use a high-contrast black with this black background with white text. When my eyes are tired, I use the brow display, which helps to read the conversation through my fingertips. So, the accommodation is in abundance out there. And also for the CART, they are able to streamline that conversation onto a screen so that those in the audience, the guests who are also hard of hearing and deaf, can read the conversation and be part of the group. So statistically, I want to share that they are very inconsistent in regard to those who are visually and hearing impaired. Last year, the Florida Department of Elderly Affairs gathered data by county of those who have hearing difficulties, vision difficulties, and combination of vision and hearing difficulties. Here in Putnam County, the hearing difficulty is 2,660. The vision difficulty is 1,960. Those who have combined vision and hearing difficulties is 315. So, that is over the age of 60, and there are more under the age of 60. So, the population is in the community. In the whole state of Florida, just those who have combined vision and hearing loss, it is, it found that it was almost 120,000 people. And according to the Center for Disease Control, they say that approximately 19% of those over the age of 70 and non-institutionalized have vision impairment. And 1/3 of that population have hearing loss. And then, according to a study that's conducted by San Diego University, Mississippi State, Helen Keller National Center, and Rehabilitation Training Center of Mississippi, 21% of the population over the age of 75 have combined vision and hearing loss. It's out there, and it's there, and the state agencies do what they can. Unfortunately, they only provide services for those who are vocationally inclined, those who are seeking education and employment. So, there are people that are graduating from college, young kids that are graduating from college, and they are learning everything they need to go to get a job. But when they finish their education, they end up not being served because they can't get a job. And it's not because they're not capable, it's because as a former sighted person myself, we can't see that ability. So, I would like to ask, first before that, I've already said it. Anyway, so I would like to ask, in Helen Keller's speech in Ohio with the Lions Club, she asked them to be her knight to conquer in darkness. And darkness for me is the unknown, as it is for normal. We don't know what it's like to be blind until it happens. We don't know what it's like to lose our hearing until it happens. We can empathize with those that we know, but you don't know until you experience it. So, I want to take what Helen Keller has done and ask the Putnam County Commission to consider working with the state VR and Division of Blind Services. VR is Vocational Rehabilitation. They have cited over and over that there is a large resistance of employers to hire those who are blind and/or deaf in this county. And you're not alone because there's other counties all across the state that also are just as resistant. So, I want to ask the Putnam County Commissioner to be my knight in conquering darkness and begin becoming leader in providing the employment resources for those who are blind and/or deaf. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. Point of privilege, I'm going to ask Chief Romey and Jason Foshee to come up, please, and really quickly discuss the burn ban that expired, but where we're at right now with all the wonderful rain that we've been receiving throughout this county.
Thank you, sir. As we all are aware, back many months ago, we were before, Jason and I were before you in an emergency meeting to declare local state of emergency and implement a burn ban that included many different pieces and parts. And I have to come back to tell you that we did, due to Mother Nature's thankful rain over this last week, we've let the burn ban expire. But we did have some very close calls. I know down in Paradise Shores, we had some very, very, very concerning moments down there with, you know, about 60 or 80 homes in that subdivision that potentially were going to be lost. But thankfully, because of the joint partnership with us and forestry and water management, we had enough crews down there on another fire to be able to move and mitigate that situation pretty quickly. But we did, as I said, let the burn ban expire, and just so everybody knows, every seven days after you implement a declaration of emergency, every seven days it automatically expires if you do not re-initiate it. So, I'm not sure if y'all would like to re-initiate it, but...
I think we're okay. That's just me speaking.
But Jason does have some statistics from the fires this year, and I believe last year, some numbers.
Okay. Jason, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just from March 1st till June 1st, just to give you a little estimate, we had 42 new fires and 2,755 acres burned in Putnam County from March 1st to June 1st. So, and from July 1st, which is my fiscal year, till now, we had 116 fires in Putnam County, which is moderate. We've had more, we've had less. I'm going to say if it wasn't for the burn ban, we would have had quite a bit more. So, I appreciate that. It did help us a lot. And a lot of the fires we got this year wasn't, they were bigger than normal, I would say most of them were. We didn't have the couple hundred acres, which we still had a couple hundred acres, but some of the fires with the drought, they did get a little larger than normal for us. But a busy year. I thought it was going to be even busier, but thank goodness we got some rain, so.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'll say this, you know, if you need us to institute another emergency burn ban, you know where we're at.
Yes, sir.
And you come back to us, and we won't do anything till we hear from our professionals, and that's y'all. So, thank you. Yes, Quinn.
If I may add one other point, we have an overabundance, if you will, of what we call man-caused fires, or other folks may understand them as incendiary arson fires. I have to reach out to the Sheriff's Office and tell them thank you. The partnership that we had this year and we've had with the Sheriff's Office made a difference. We, you know, that is a big, big deal for, you know, for the fire service, and particularly forestry also. Most people think, oh, well, you're just burning some palmettos and a few pine trees and all that. But one thing I've learned over the years, and it kind of reinforced it with me this year on the last fire, the last big fire we had, the over 700-acre fire in Sun Garden, is that those trees are a business. Those, that 700 acres was worth to that land over over $1.4 million. I don't know what he lost, but if he lost all of it, that's a life savings. So, you know, we're trying to mitigate that, and the burn ban obviously helped to that end, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you again. I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you for coming forward. All right. Also see Dana and Brian in the audience. If you'll work your way to the podium real quick. Just want to get a quick update from you. I know you were eager to share that when you came in this morning, so you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I want to start off by thanking you for your patience. This is always the fun part of any project that you're working on is the waiting. We're still, you know, still waiting for a formal announcement from the client. Have been in contact with the client, looking favorable for us, so hopefully we'll hear some good news within the next week.
And we're speaking about Project Purple.
Project Purple. That is correct, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for all your hard work, and we appreciate the update on that.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to our agenda, public comments. I have three cards here, and this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room on both sides, and they will be given to our deputy clerk. Again, we practice a little bit less. If you don't, if you want to wait for just after the blue cards, then we'll entertain you at the same time. Our first speaker today is Earl Ballenge. Mr. Earl, if you'll come up and speak to us, please.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, sir.
At the last BOCC meeting on May 23rd, I urged you all to pull consent items O and P until the public can be made aware of what they are. I explained that Florida statute 288.075 only pertained to the Economic Development Agency and not to commissioners. After stating that, I looked at the sitting commissioners and thought I was out west overlooking Mount Rushmore, four stone faces. I knew right then and there that I was not going to find out what Project Purple was, and I didn't. A little later, the consent items were passed at a vote of 4-0. Today, I'm going in another direction. Per AGO Attorney General Opinion 76-240, the last paragraph reads, and I will read it here. The Sunshine Law requires that the public be given the opportunity to attend an open public meeting so that the views of its elected officials can be known. If codes at a public meeting were to be approved, the result would be a frustration of the public's right to have knowledge of and thereby participate in the decision-making process. After reading that, in my opinion, gentlemen, you each broke the Sunshine Laws of the state of Florida at our last meeting. What is Project Purple? What is the timeline for its start? When will it be placed into service? What steps have been taken to train our citizens to be able to perform the tasks that will be paying good wages? Are there programs in the local schools, colleges, and tech schools to teach these skills? There are many questions that need answers, and there are many questions that need to be asked. I feel the public can help. We all saw the talent that came forward when we were having the landfill crisis. There's a lot of educated people, smart people in this county who will help if they were given a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballenge. We appreciate that. Faith Sparkman?
Mr. Chairman, if Ms. Sparkman takes a line, can we call on counsel for just a brief explanation of why we're under a gag order?
That would be appropriate.
Well, the, as I indicated in the past, the confidentiality is by statute, is requested by the company that is seeking, that was seeking this county's support for its economic development project. That request was made through the county's Economic Development Director or Representative, and as such, that confidentiality was requested to be extended to each one of the commissioners so that this project could move forward. Part of the reason why the companies do that is certainly because they have competition out there, and they need to keep things, their future plans, under wraps. And they certainly understand that they have legitimate business reasons for doing so, and that's the reason, that's the reason why the statute does exist, is so, is so that confidentiality can be maintained and make Florida, and specifically Putnam County, an attractive opportunity for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Sparkman, sorry we had you standing there for too long. I apologize.
Okay. Good morning. I have a problem. When we come here and we fill out a blue card, we put down our name, address, and our 911 address. And that's for a reason, because when we get up here, the people that do that are telling you the truth or asking you a truthful question. But in the past two years, and it doesn't matter who's chairman, who is assistant, you need to look at the blue cards, or if somebody's getting up here, make sure that they give you their 911 address. The reason for that is those blue cards and us getting up here, whether we give our name here or there, is recorded. It's called public input. So, if the state or any attorney comes back here and wants to know who spoke at these meetings and did not tell the truth, they have a right to come in here and ask to see all the tapes of these meetings. And right now, we have something going on in this county where it was left go. I guess people didn't catch it, but once you have one person started not giving their 911 address, you had two or three more come forward and do the same thing. And so now, I guess, I don't know how to put this without getting in trouble, somebody's put me in the middle of that. And so I will not help that person when you can't tell the truth up here and give your 911 address. So, please, whoever's sitting there, make sure that the people up here do that, okay? Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. Our next speaker, Mary Beth Donaldson.
Good morning. I want to thank you again for allowing...
I want to thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to present our proposal to your insurance committee yesterday. There were excellent points made about self-funding. However, I'm confused about some of the comments. It was discussed that Putnam County should hire a consultant to walk you through self-funding as an option for next year. My understanding is that you already did this through the Wakely Consulting Firm, and their recommendation was for you to move to a self-funded model. Why not go ahead and get a third-party administrator to build your self-funded plan? As discussed yesterday, we could have it ready in as little as one week, but a maximum of thirty days. That's what we do. Our job is to be your consultant to make this happen. I've worked in the healthcare industry for over twenty-three years. I started my company because I was tired of watching struggling companies and municipalities paying exorbitant amounts of money to a fully insured company for their healthcare. I analyzed the limited data that was provided during the RFP process. Had Putnam County been self-funded during the years of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it would have approximately two point six million dollars plus interest in its claim fund. These are funds that could be used to reduce premiums, give deductible credits, create wellness incentives, or add better benefits for your employees. Your county is concerned with cash flow. Now is the time to make a change. All of the stop-loss carriers I work with allow for advanced funding. That means, should one of your members incur a claim over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they will fund that claim upfront, so the money does not leave your pocket. You have a budget crisis. Why not make a change now? Instead of giving a fully insured carrier mon, carrier your money, why not allow a third-party administrator to take a portion of that to pay for your stop-loss, your PPO network access, your utilization review, your fully insured transplant product, your administrative fees, your broker fees? Take the rest of that and put it in an interest-bearing account in Putnam County. The time is now to make a change happen. In the words of Anthony Robbins and before him, Albert Einstein and Henry Ford, "If you always do what you've always done, you will always get what you've always got." In the case of Putnam County's healthcare, I believe in the wisdom of this board that you are making the right move and moving towards self-funded, and that ultimately you will improve the fiscal strength and health of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. We appreciate that. Is there anybody else? This is a time, if you did not fill out a blue card and you wished to come forward, please state your name, address for the record, and we will entertain you. Thank you.
John Spells, one-oh-six Citrus Lane.
Good morning, Ms.
I'm sorry I was unable to come to that workshop meeting, but as you recall, I already been to the workshop meeting for that Dog Branch project. But what I don't understand is, how would y'all accept money for the work of cleaning the canal, but don't have the right to go on the property, but spend the money for, um, nutrient study? But you know, it's just, it's gotten to the point that I've been coming to these meetings all this time, and even though me and Mr. Kamo both was at that workshop meeting, we didn't get no results out of nothing, 'cause we had recommended, if y'all wasn't gonna do anything to that canal, send the money back. Nobody didn't wanna send the money back, but at the last meeting, when I asked what was y'all gonna do, then you wanted to send me back to a meeting again. I don't have time to run back and forth, you know, while everybody just sit around and just stall out the time. If you're not gonna do it, just send the money back and I don't even have to bring it up no more. But I just find it wrong that we all pushed for this for so long, you get the money, you run and give it to an engineer to do a study on nutrients, then when we ask you about it, then you say you can't go on the property 'cause you don't have the easement. But if you recall when you was buying that spider machine, go back, if I didn't misunderstand, Mr. Preston said if we got this spider machine, we wouldn't have really many problems with the easement. We could just go right down into four or five foot of water and clean the ditches or whatever, but yet you got the machine and hadn't nothing been touched. And you know, and it's just sad that we went through this for so long and thought we had made a little headway, and we ran back kicking the can again. And another thing I appreciate is, when I come in here and mention about the garbage along Moody Road, someone had the courtesy of going by there and pushing it further back onto the property. I went there and I picked up that debris. There's no dwelling there. Most of that stuff blows in from when they had that icebox, and then people dump tires there. Somebody, I don't drive a semi, somebody put two tires there. I saw it along the road curve, hoping that, you know, they would go by and pick it up. Mr. Gas asks me where the location. I told him so much until I just got tired of just even talking about it, and after the day, I won't talk about it. But you know, it's just sad that people take the time to try to make a place look good. If you're not gonna make any money off of it, you don't wanna pick it up. But you know, I'm not gonna even bring it back up, and it really hasn't gotten to the point, for as long as I've been coming to this meeting, voicing my opinion on things, it's just a waste of my time. I can't just keep missing work, coming here, bringing issues that would kinda make a little different, and nothing occurred. So, you know, whatever y'all choose to do, that's entirely up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Mr. Tompkins, could you come to the podium, please? Question for you. Did we ever get the, um, easements along Dog Branch Canal to get in there?
No, sir. We have not received the first easement, and to clarification, we did not do a nutrient study. We did a floodplain study.
Right.
What we hired a consultant for, which gave us the results that we were looking for, which confirmed what we needed to do, and we need the easements to do that.
Yeah. And we just received, if, if everything goes right, and Tallahassee will receive additional funding for that hu, full floodplain management of Dog Branch. Is that correct?
That is correct. We were up for some money from Tallahassee.
Mr. Spells, I wanna say this, stay tuned and stay with us on this project, because Tallahassee, our state legislator's funded additional money. Maybe there's some relief coming, but if we can't get easements, we can't go on properties, so. And just take, going down the canal is not going, what are we gonna do with the sediment at that point?
That's, that's what we said. We could clean these canals out, but we still need easements to be able to get in there and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that did not fill out a blue card that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing no people standing up, we'll end our public comment period. Uh, commissioners, the consent agenda, is there any items that you wish to pull?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Libel.
I have none.
Mr. Goddard?
I'll pull D.
Uh, okay.
What was that?
Item number what?
D.
D? Okay. Commissioner Pickens wants to pull D, and I did too, so that's good. And, um, really quickly, I wanna pull item N. So Commissioner Pickens, we'll start with you. Oh, I wanna pull T too, I'm sorry. So M and T are my two topics. So, Mr. Pickens, you have the floor, sir, on item D.
Okay. Yeah, if I could just have Quinn Romay, um, come forward and, uh, really just explain, um, you know, the process, um, how the bids went out, and just the lack of this one company bidding to retrofit those trucks. And then, um, you know, the cost savings to the county and what these trucks will be used for, and, uh, they would probably be, uh, would've been very beneficial with the brush fires we just had, and then where the trucks will be located.
Uh, thank you. Uh, what this, this, uh, agenda item is for is to retrofit two of the, uh, military surplus units that we've gotten through a couple of different resources. One is a DOD resource, uh, through, uh, Stark, and the other one is through forestry. Uh, basically what we do is we get the trucks for nothing. Uh, both of these trucks have less than three hundred miles on them. Uh, they're in very good shape, uh, but we've gotta convert them into what we, we call a brush truck, which, uh, takes a tank, a pump, uh, plumbing, uh, and all the various accoutrements to make sure it's, you know, is up to speed and, and meets the standard that we're looking at. Over the years, we've done these. Uh, these will replace two older units that we got back in nineteen ninety-eight that were surplus then. Uh, most of those are either sixties or seventies vintage, uh, military trucks, and they're in disrepair, to say the least. So these two units will be put into service to, uh, as I said, to replace those. Um, we've looked at, over the years, buying new ones, uh, you know, because everybody would love to have, you know, bright new shiny vehicles, but a new brush truck at the same level would be somewhere around between two and three hundred thousand dollars. So each of these are, uh, thirty-something thousand to do. Uh, I think we're getting the best bang for our buck that we could, could do. So, and we're, like I said, the, the trucks that we're replacing, we put into service, you know, during or right after the ninety-eight wildfires, so we're getting pretty good longevity out of them.
Okay. You good, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment, though. Um, I just wanna commend you and your staff, um, and the forestry, water management, uh, all the volunteer staff, uh, for handling all the fires that we recently had. As you mentioned, um, we had, uh, Union Camp Road Fire, which was about two hundred acres and a bayhead, and you, uh, did a perimeter, uh, containment, and, uh, it was just a blessing that the equipment was there and the quick action and reaction for y'all to go to Paradise Shores saved a number of the, uh, number of structures there, um, with that fire. So, and I just wanna commend you for your service to the county. Thank you.
We've got a great team and, and the volunteers, uh, you know, the volunteer firefighters, the paid firefighters, and as you said, water management was there, uh, with us. The Florida Park Service has been on these fires with us. Forestry's obviously been a key component, and those guys get, they're the unsung heroes in the fact that they're kinda, you know, everybody says firefighter, and you think everybody, you know, in the red trucks, but these guys, you know, on the tractors are, are there, you know, in the fire, uh, putting the lines in, putting the roads around that, and, you know, I can't say enough kudos to those, those brave individuals on there. Uh, the MEMS fire up there, they've had several tractors burned over, burned up. Uh, they had a, forestry had a tractor in South Florida, uh, get caught and burned. Uh, fortunately, we didn't have anybody injured. We didn't have anybody, uh, equipment lost. We did have, obviously, repairs and things that needed to be done, but the Union Camp Fire that you mentioned was, was one of those, uh, milestones, if you will, that it started, uh, from an escaped, uh, trash pile, but as it, as it burned that night, the forestry made the, Jason made the decision, along with us, to, to do a burnout on our conditions, uh, because there was, uh, the bay that you mentioned had not burned, and had we not done that, uh, the fire probably would've gotten out and, and continued. But even in doing that, uh, burnout to just show or demonstrate the conditions, that night about one o'clock in the morning, we had a spot fire that was a mile, one point three miles away from that, so, which is unheard of in, you know, normal conditions, so.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Chief, um, I've got a chance to be out with quite a few of the volunteers, and, uh, they, they talk very highly of you, especially with this equipment, that this, not just these two, but you have done this repeatedly, finding, uh, good deals for us, fitting them to fit our needs, and then putting them out there in service, uh, that they, uh, we're very proud of you, and, uh, we appreciate that we've had very few fires during this, uh, sad time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on. Item number M. Um, Mr. Tompkins, could you wa, make your way to the podium, please? Um, this is a road called Holloway Road. It's out in West Putnam, on the north side of one hundred, and it's a road that doesn't seem to ever go away, for some reason. It's a road that keeps costing us money and money and money. And we haven't even put asphalt down yet, so really briefly touch on why we're paying thirteen thousand dollars and, you know, I believe, the item before that's twenty-nine, but that's a cultural resource survey, but the thirteen thousand.
Well, we've got several things, is part of the property went through, used to be Plum Creek, and then now got switched to Warehouser, and they, we only own by prescriptive right a thirty-foot strip of land. In order to build Holloway Road the way it should be built, we need sixty-six feet, so we had to buy additional land from Warehouser. They came back with this, this was their appraisal. This is what they said. We tried to negotiate with them, but this was as cheap as we could get it, so.
Oh, thank you.
That's, that's all we can do. I mean, we're getting state easement from the state to go through the state property at no fee for that, but we had, did have to buy the Warehouser property. So we're doing everything we can, and hopefully one of these days, we'll pave Holloway Road and we won't be up here talking about it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt, well, Mr. Tompkins is talking about the, the state. Um, could you just touch on, um, the additional agreement that we had with the state for, for the easement that they provided?
You don't like the?
What we provided in exchange?
Well, with the state, even though they gave us the property, we had to do what's known as a net positive benefit. Uh, we had to come up, well, I think around sixteen thousand dollars with a benefit to the state on why they gave us the property. And we worked out with Forest Service that we provided some roadbed materials, some shell rock to them out of our fund, so that satisfied our net positive benefit, and we put it down on some of their forest roads up there where they direct it, so it was done as a state project, not a county project. We just provided the material to them. We satisfied our net positive benefit, and now we can have the easement executed.
They just couldn't do it on their own, could they?
We didn't want to do it on our own.
I understand. Well, thank you, Mr. Tompkins, for the explanation.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any questions on that item? Okay. Uh, item T, Mr. Gas, question for you, sir. This is the request to extend the contract. Um, just a really quick question, and I won't belabor the point. Um, in reading the contract, it looks like it ended in March of this year, correct?
Correct.
And that's what your, your cover page says. Do we have provisions in the contract that allow us to go to four months, or is this kinda like a new deal?
This is just extending that contract. They agreed to extend that contract for the four months.
Okay.
Um, we're working on a new RFP.
Okay.
Um, they did not finish until actually the thirty-first of March, when the contract expired, was when all of their final paperwork and everything was done. And, um, we had some lessons learned from this, that, um, we're trying to get included into the new RFP so that we don't have the same issues again in the future.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on item T? All right. If seeing none, the chairman, the board, the, will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Here we have a con, move approval by Commissioner Libel.
A second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed like sign. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is passed. Item number six, Ann Allen. This is award of the RFP seventeen-sixteen for annual health insurance to Florida Blue, annual dental insurance to MetLife, annual vision insurance to MetLife, and annual life insurance to Aetna. Um, we have separate packet, we have separate items in our packet, but I guess we're going to take this as one big item, correct?
That's how it's presented on the agenda, yes.
Okay. You have the floor, Ms. Allen.
Well, good morning, everyone. Haven't seen you all in probably twelve hours, it seems. Um, well, as you stated, we had an RFP seventeen dash sixteen. Um, the committee started meeting back in January of this year, and the decision was made to go out to bid, and we did so on April seventh, twenty-seventeen. We did have some delays along the, the way, we had initially hoped our responses would have been back on May eighth, but we had to extend it three weeks, so that meant our proposal deadline was May twenty-fourth. After that time, we had two teams, the evaluation team and the health insurance committee. The health insurance committee, as you know, was put together to review all of our options for health insurance, and the evaluation team, since we were going out to bid, was to evaluate and recommend for the remaining benefits for our employees, the dental vision and life insurance. As a result of all of the meetings we had, um, and all the materials and all the discussions with either the employees or others that we brought in, as well as our information yesterday that was close to the public per vendor, um, the decision was made to award for our health insurance to continue with, um, Florida Blue, and we realized a three percent reduction from our rates from last year. So that is what is before you today for the health insurance.
You, you wanna do them all while you're here?
Sure. Okay, for dental insurance, um, of course, we went out to RFP, and the same thing, we used our current, um, benefit levels that we have now, and the lowest benefit. used our current, um, benefit levels that we have now, and the lowest bidder, and the evaluation team recommended that we would go with MetLife insurance.
Did that produce a savings?
That does produce a savings to the county, and, um, we didn't calculate it per se because we know the enrollment numbers will change, but it was a significant savings in the attachment. You can see the monthly cost. Currently, the core plan's twenty-two fifty-nine.
And the vision now?
Okay, and our vision plan, um, is also the lowest bidder, based on the recommendation of the evaluation team, was also to go with MetLife for our vision insurance plan, and we are seeing a savings as well on that, um, and it's offering the same level of service that we have currently as well.
And part five?
And then finally, part five of the RFP was to award life insurance, and this one, um, the cost to the county was for the basic life insurance, and we did realize a savings per one thousand at seventeen cents, so we are recommending that we award this to Aetna.
So, all in all, going out for bid this year produced savings to the county. Is that correct?
That is correct. In every category, that is correct, as well as educated all of the committee and evaluation teams, and we know we, we have work to do. We realize that significantly.
Yeah, we have a lot of work. We spent a lot of time the last few weeks poring over those proposals and trying to get the numbers somewhat honed down, if you will. It's just been deliberating, but we, we, we're closer than we were, so we're, we're there. I want to start off by saying, on the health insurance side, I'm still a big fan of self-funding. I believe that's where we're going to see the major savings on, in the county. I understand the process is, is difficult right now, but something that really bothers me, and, and I really need clarification, what we've heard during the committee meetings is how does this affect our employees? What is the bottom line number the county can pay, and what is the, how, the percentage of to the employees? And that's something that we just haven't gotten to yet, and I think that's the big, the biggest thing we really need to get to pretty soon. We're going to award a contract today, or, or maybe not, and without that number, we don't know what we just did to our employees, you know?
Well, as we discussed in our meetings, um, the funds to cover and provide benefits to our employees handled through the budgetary process, which you are all required to have a balanced budget, and, um, Ms. Papel could speak better to that. However, we also have a section one twenty-five plan that we have to offer our open enrollment in a timely period, and it's been our normal business to start it in July, because we have to give thirty days to our employees to make decisions, have all the materials ready, and that's almost a, a month away, and be ready to explain all this to them. And you know how long the, the committee took to understand if we were to make that change with our employees within the month, and try to explain, um, and meet with about six hundred employees. Currently, we have five hundred and thirty-two enrolled, but we do have to offer it to all of our employees, and some take the insurance, some do not, but we do have to educate them on all levels of insurance. Currently, we are providing a hundred percent of the core plan insurance to our employees for health, dental, vision, and life, up to fifty thousand dollars for their life insurance. If that matches their salary, if it's a little lower than, we only go up to their annual salary, but the excess stops at fifty thousand. The other part of this is the employees have been getting supplements on their dependent coverages, depending on which coverage level they would select, the county was making a contribution towards that, and that's something this board has to determine, like we have to do every year at budget time, how much that will be. So as far as how much is being budgeted, that is still open for your, I'm not sure when the meeting is. Ms. Papel, could you expand on that, please?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth, okay.
Our next budget meeting's the nineteenth, but I can't say for a fact that insurance will be the topic on the nineteenth. Once you determine the route we're going with health insurance, then we can sit down and craft rates, employer portion, employee portion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments I'd like to.
Go right ahead, Mr.
Make on this, and, and I'm going to be very direct. This whole insurance process this year, no matter where we're going next year, I have not been comfortable with it. I don't think anybody up here has been comfortable with the process. It's been clumsy at best, and when Ms. Donaldson said earlier, I asked for a consultant yesterday, that was not a, Wakely gave an opinion, and that was consulting, could be considered consulting, but I want a consultant next year to guide us through, here we are, last minute again, doing, we got another request for last minute. Like I said, it's been very clumsy, this is a huge multimillion dollar deal, and I don't think we handled it very well, and I want it handled different next year, no matter which way we go, and I am serious about that.
Thank you, Mr. Lible.
If I could just expand on the Wakely report, that was provided by, uh, Bates Hewitt, and they provided that, they are the agent of record for health insurance currently.
It was appreciated, it's fine, but I want to go beyond that.
I just wanted to make everyone understand that the commission didn't pay for that, it came from our vendor, which is part of the Florida Blue package and their agent of record. Um, I, I agree. This is difficult for us, too. I mean, we have to meet with these employees and explain this coverage to them and the, the coverage levels, and this is not an easy process. I was asked several months ago how long it would take to properly do this, and I said a year, and I really meant that, because one of the things is educating the committee so they can make a sound decision. That is a very important process of this whole entire renewal.
Well, I did feel like yesterday that we moved the needle quite a bit on the education part, um, because I, considering the prior meeting versus yesterday's meeting, um, people understood the self-funding model a whole lot better, and they understood the savings potential to the county a whole lot better. Uh, but I agree with Mr. Lible, it's been, uh, hard to get this committee started, hard to get the proper numbers, and even yesterday, the numbers were, on our sheets were not adding up to what the providers were saying, and we can't do that again. It just cannot.
Look, I want to be clear, next year, and when I say next year, this year.
Right, this year.
I want an insurance expert driving the bus for the commissioners, and I can't be clearer than that.
An impartial one, I'm sure.
Very impartial.
Right.
Working for us.
If I, I, I agree with that. I, I think we need somebody, you know, uh, driving the bus, you know, and educating us and leading this, um, and we need to start soon, um, the process if we're going to go to self-funding and look at both models again.
Thank you for the support.
Commissioners?
We're not going through this again.
Ms. Papel?
We welcome that recommendation because we would have made it to you.
But it wasn't, and I think that we're over our head, but I want to, I'm not here fashion, I just know where we need to drive the bus.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Downs, let me also say, I appreciate your comments yesterday. Uh, you, uh, made this approach a few years back. This is a, this is a good thing, we had a big committee, uh, worked really hard, and, uh, today we're going to make a decision, and, so, that's, any other questions for Ms. Allen? All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just remember you have, uh, in front of you on page one is all the different ones that we're going to be doing today as a whole.
So your parts one through five is you want it in one motion?
Well, the, the part two, the self-funding, if, if that's the, the will of the board, you'll bring that up, too, but it's going to be parts, yeah, however you want to deal with it.
Your chairman, run with it.
Deal with the whole thing at one time.
Well, well, your chairman, do what you want, but I think there needs to be some clarity here.
If, if I could provide some clarity, the motion, um, can be for, um, one, two, three, or, or all of the, um, recommended, um, options, um, but, uh, if, if the desire is that, um, the movement, um, request approval for, um, all of them, I think, uh, the motion would be properly stated, um, you could just read it from item six on the agenda.
Mr. Manning, let me ask you this, how could we do all of part one and part two if self-funding is part two and part one is fully funded? We're going to have to choose one or the other on that, that item, I believe, aren't we? We're not going to be able to have two plans in play. Ms. Allen, could you?
Oh, I see what you're saying, right, yes, that would need to be a clarifying.
There are four agenda items. The, each agenda items reports to you, there were pa, five parts of RFP seventeen dash sixteen. However, today before you is part one, the fully insured group health insurance recommendation from the health insurance committee. It's independent of human resources, we don't sit on that committee, and then the, the rest, the final three are the ones that human resources and the evaluation team are recommending to you for dental, vision, and life insurance.
Well, you brought it to us in one packet, so we understand it's either going to be part one or part two, and then three, four, and five.
The recommendation, well, I did submit four separate agenda items, I don't know why they're all in one item, but that's not my intent, and that's not how I submitted them. I went, um, the first one, award of annual, uh, health insurance, if you look at the recommendation, the health insurance committee voted to recommend part one at its meeting.
Well, I'll tell you what, as chairman, we're going to take them one at a time, and we'll clean this up.
Thank you.
So your first item today, gentlemen, is, uh, the award for the annual health insurance.
Staff recommendation is on page one oh four.
Gotcha.
For, I'll offer a motion for the fully insured group health insurance.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens.
And that is consistent, for clarification, the motion is that it's consistent with as recommended by the, um, committee?
Yes, okay, so I understood, is that how you understood it, Mr. Pickens? Okay. Okay, any discussion on this topic? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Okay, the next one is the award of the annual dental insurance. Chairman will entertain a motion?
Move approval?
Proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Goddard, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign, the ayes have it. Part four, vision, chair will entertain a motion on the vision insurance. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard, all in, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign, the ayes have it. Award of the annual life insurance, the chair will entertain a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and we will get that committee back up and running very, very fast, probably within a few weeks. I want to see it. See what? Well, I'm not sure we're going to wait that long. I'm ready to move again, so, um, okay, codes enforcement, fine reduction case, two thousand twelve zero zero six six six, one twenty-six Morse Trail.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Sammons.
Thinking in the back at, uh, there it comes.
I'm sorry? Is it not working?
I don't know if he's back there to change it, uh, but I'll start talking.
Okay.
Um, this is at one twenty-six Morse Trail, uh, it's a property that, uh, has been involved in our process for four years, five months, uh, it's actually gone through a foreclosure. The, uh, bank has a, uh, prospective owner that is willing to buy it. I've done the, uh, assessment of, uh, costs, our cost was eight hundred fifty-one dollars, and I'm recommending that, uh, we accept that in lieu of the thirty-five thousand five hundred twenty-dollar fine if it's paid within thirty days. Uh, they are basically holding up a closing to find out what, uh, what you're going to do at this point. We do have pictures, but they're not up there, so.
We have them, we have them in our packet.
Yeah.
Commissioner, is any questions for Mr. Sammons?
Mr. Sammons, is anybody from the bank here representing?
I don't believe they are.
When you say a prospective or a prospect for buying it, how strong is that?
Uh, they're, they're closing on it.
They're, okay, that's strong, okay.
That's, the, if you look at the picture, there's the, the carport still in disrepair, but, uh, we'll make sure that the new owner takes care of that.
Sounds good, and the, the bank was comfortable with the eight hundred fifty-one dollars?
Yes.
All right. Move approval, staff recommendations.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens, all in, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose like sign, the ayes have it. Uh, item case number two thousand thirteen dash oh four seven five, request for abatement.
We do, we do have the computer working now.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. This is at two sixteen Lakesore Road, uh, request for abatement. I won't go through the whole process that we go through, you've got it on the agenda. Uh, the photographs pretty much speak for themselves, uh, this has been a long-going problem in the area, um, and as we went through last time, we don't have money today to do that, but, uh, we're hopeful that we'll get an allotment, uh, come October first, and we'll, we'll be using that money to, uh, start abating these properties. We're, we're asking for your authorization to proceed with abatement when funds are available.
Thank you, Mr. Sammons.
Move approval, staff recommendations.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard, all in, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next case, item two fourteen, two thousand fourteen dash oh seven three six, request for abatement.
Uh, this is at eleven oh six Stewart Avenue in Interlochen, and as you can tell, that's, uh, a fairly airy mobile home at this point. Once again, we've gone through the process, and, uh, it's obviously been a problem in the area, uh, we're requesting the authority to abate this as soon as we can get the funds to do that.
Mr. Sammons, I couldn't help but laugh, but that is a very airy mobile home. A lot of breeze way through there, isn't it?
Lot of natural light.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens, any further discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, we're moving on to our ten o'clock certain, it's ten oh eight, uh, we have a planning development public hearings. Mr.?
I'm doing this also.
Oh, you're doing it?
Yes.
You're staying right here with us, okay?
I am. This is a, a request for a small-scale future land use amendment, uh, from Agriculture One to, uh, commercial at, uh, Cooper Lake Mobile Home Park, I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, with that, that's the property in question, uh, there's the zoning.
Mr. Hammond, you have to, Mr. Sammons, you have to speak into the mic, or something that went dead or something. Okay. Hang on, well, Brandon's on the way with a battery.
Hello?
Okay.
This one works a little bit, this one's almost dead, too, so.
Okay.
I'll give this one a break, and then, and then when this one dies, I can use that one.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought it would, I'd looked at it, it just had one bar, I thought it would be enough to get through this, but obviously didn't. Uh, the applicant is requesting a small-scale comp plan amendment of, uh, point eight-three acres, basically the front two hundred feet of that partial, portion of the, uh, Cooper Lake Mobile Home Park, uh, which is currently zoned commercial, and at, uh, in nineteen eighty-six was zoned that way to, uh, allow for a convenience store, which I don't think ever happened, but it was there. The property owner that owns it now would like to do some commercial on that property, but the egg one future land use requires the, uh, commercial to be ag-related, and he doesn't want it to be ag-related, so, uh, he's requested the, uh, the small-scale comp plan amendment to zone it to commercial, uh, to do that, uh, the planning commission has recommended approval on this, and, uh, we're requesting that, uh, you do as well.
Okay. We have to, public hearings, Mr. Manning, we need to, in favor or against, is that correct?
Yes, open it up.
And any ex parte communications?
Um, no, that's just on the quasi-judicial, um, and a land use amendment is not quasi-judicial in nature.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wanna speak in opposition of this application? Okay, seeing none. Gentlemen, time for discussion.
A little confused on the zoning. You're going from, it's a C-store, correct? The empty one on twenty-one and twenty?
No, 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 this is, uh, Cooper Lake Mobile Home Park.
On twenty.
There's really not a commercial business there now. It's just, uh-
I know which building. Now the zoning makes, I don't have a question. Go ahead.
Okay.
All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. Okay, the next one is zoning map amendment, commercial retail to general, commercial, general.
This is the same property. Uh, back when it was rezoned, C-two, uh, back in the mid-eighties, C-two was the general commercial district. It has since become a light commercial district through changes in the comp, uh, to the Land Development Code. Uh, and basically, they've asked to, uh, uh, get the rezoning back to where it was a general, general commercial zoning. They would like to, uh, possibly do, uh, rental truck, moving truck, uh, and, uh, propane sales there. So that's what they would like to do. So basically, the Planning Commission's recommended approval, and, uh, staff also recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sammons.
Mr. Chairman, this would be quasi-judicial in nature, as it is a zoning change, so, um, any, uh, ex parte communications need to be put on the record.
I had none, Mr. Chair.
I had none.
I had none.
I've had none.
I spoke with Susan Neil Roberts, who sits on the Planning Commission, uh, about this item.
Okay. All right, now we open it up for public comments. Is there anybody in favor of this application? Anybody in opposition of this application? All right, seeing none. Further discussion? Seeing none of that, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move approval.
We got, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
Second it.
A proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose like sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a new buddy, another person at the microphone today, Mr. Hammonds. Brought in the big guns for the land development. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
What we have before us today is, um, five different code amendments. Most of them are cleaning up little problems, either for the public or for staff or for both. The first one is an ordinance that amends Putnam County Land Development Code by amending sections, a variety of, of parts of sections two and three, nine, and eleven of the Land Development Code. You will remember recently, the Board of County Commissioners voted to repeal the business tax receipt. In doing that, um-
Mr. Hammonds, can I stop you?
Pardon me?
Deputy, would you see if the, what the noise is back there? It's just coming right through here.
He shut the door.
Okay.
We're good. The door was open.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hammonds, I'm sorry.
What this is, is a, us kind of making the reparations in the Land Development Code to match that repeal of that business tax receipt ordinance. Five or six places in the LDC, business tax receipts were specifically referenced. We're removing those. That's the entire purpose of this ordinance, is to catch up with the general code.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of this? Anybody in opposition? Okay, Commissioners.
Move approval. Staff recommendations, Mr. Chair.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose like sign. Okay, next item, item D.
This second amendment is an amendment to Article Two of the Land Development Code, which deals with our requirements for certain accessory structures. We have and current, have currently and have always had, uh, a basic requirement that in order to build, if, if you have a, a lot of a certain size, like two acres or less, that the principal, the principal structure, meaning a residence, has to be there first, before you can put an accessory structure.
Right.
As some of you will remember, we've addressed this issue in a couple of different ways. What we determined was that two of our sections kind of contradicted each other in Article Two, and what we're trying to do here is clean it up a little bit. If you will, look on the top of page one eighty-seven of your packet, in the proposed ordinance, and what is written in red is, of course, what we're proposing, uh, to change. And what it does is essentially strike out the old language and put in a, a more clear set of requirements under D. In the agricultural zoning district, we're proposing that parcels five acres or larger or bona fide farms may place an accessory structure on a lot prior to that principal use being there. Okay? Then if it's parcels between two acres and four point nine-nine, may place one accessory structure, two hundred and fifty square feet or less, with proper permits. Okay? Then if it's below two acres, still, you gotta have the main use, a house, there prior to putting those accessory structures on. And again, that gets back to the change we made, oh, a year ago or so, where we took away the old exemption about a hundred and fifty square foot house, or accessory structures, because, as I explained then, isn't under the rule then, you could have literally put an accessory structure on every lot in Interlochen Lakes Estates right then. And we had a problem, we continue to have a problem with those kinds of structures turning into residences illegally. Okay? So this is kind of a compromise. It's clear as to how this applies, and it allows the folks who really need it on larger agricultural properties, it makes provision for them to have that barn that they need. At the same time, for those smaller lots, we're still maintaining control.
Mr. Hammonds, I have a question-
Yes, sir.
-that item, item three. Take, I, Interlochen Lakes Estates, as you will, in my district, and, and also Commissioner Goddard's district, and some of those lots are small. Someone wants to put a shed there for their power equipment, uh, then they need to come in and then get a permit, and they're gonna also file a building permit for a structure. Is that correct?
You can do that. If you come in, if you come in in one motion and request, and give us a plan for the principal structure and the accessory structures, show us what you're planning, and pull the permits for them, then you can extend the permits. But you're, again, you're gonna have to do something in a reasonable length of time, in good faith.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner.
Under a hundred and fifty square feet.
Still doesn't require a building permit, but it still requires a zoning permit. We wanna make sure it's put in the right spot, that you're not into the setbacks, you're not on top of the septic system, you're, those kinds of things.
Well, this item doesn't refer to a hundred and fifty feet.
Uh, that's, that's another issue in Article Two. It's a different place, but we've already dealt with that.
Okay, good.
This, this is simply to allow particularly those things that are over two acres in agriculture, where they really need a barn.
Right.
Are they, you know, they have a legitimate claim for a barn. This is kind of a weakening of the code to allow for some of those issues. We don't, we don't wanna cause the public any more difficulty than we have to. And obviously, agricultural property requires sometimes, depending on the activities you're doing. If you got animals out there, you gotta have a barn of some sort.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? All right, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed? All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
Second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens.
As a reminder, this is a first reading. This, this will have a, a second hearing.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. Mr. Hammonds, you have item number E now.
Yeah, this is, uh, code amendment CA seventeen oh four. This is amend, some, select amendments to Article Nine that deals with, a couple of different issues. Article Nine deals with our non-conformities and, uh, as well as deals with the idea of variances. And most of the changes that we've, um, proposed here have to do with variances specifically, and specifically administrative variances. On the bottom of page one ninety-four in your packet, on the bottom of page one ninety-four, and then on, um, the following page, one ninety-five B, the wording is almost exactly the same. Currently, we have a very large loophole in the code that never requires certain properties to come into compliance with the code, which causes us a problem. Because we can never fix it. What this requires is that, and, and what it will do is essentially, if you have a building, and you wanna put, particularly a commercial building, that's where this mostly applies. If you have a building and you wanna put a certain use in that building, somebody wants to rent it from you, and, and that use wants to go into that building. This would require that you must have enough parking and stormwater, and the landscaping must be right in order for you to do that. Particularly, the parking and the, and the stormwater are the main issues here. You must be able to fit into that space with the parking. If not, you're gonna have to develop some more or get a variance. Right now, our code just kinda waves that issue, and what we end up with is parking problems, where we've got something that doesn't have nearly enough parking, but they cram ten pounds in a five-pound bag anyway. So at least with this change in wording, we can push them slowly over a period of time into correcting the problem one way or the other. It mostly deals with non-conformities. Case in point is an issue we had for a long time with a, with a property in East Palaca that, uh, literally had two parking spaces, and both of those were in the FDOT right-of-way. It had just had no parking spaces. And somebody came to us one time and wanted to put a, a, essentially a bar in there, and they had no parking whatsoever. We just told them no. Now, technically, under the code, I'm not sure I could do that, but with these changes, I can and enforce it. But it, it would've simply created a problem. We've had some similar problems just recently along the lines of internet cafes that are, are trying to go into locations that they don't even come close to having enough parking or enough, uh, space to meet the required, current requirements. Secondly-
Wait a minute, Mr. Hammonds, before you go there. The case that you talked about in East Palaca, are we effectively then, by doing this, making their property value nil at that point?
Uh, you, you have to avoid problems, but no, we have dealt with that issue already. Because they own some other property down the way.
Yeah, but what if they didn't own property? What if, there's nothing to buy around there? They've-
It is worthless.
I'm sorry?
It is worthless. If it does not have parking, it is worthless. You cannot allow things to go into places that can't accommodate it. It just, it just doesn't work.
Mr. Lible?
What if the business was operational and never shut down? Is there a six-month clause is what I'm getting at?
Oh, they can, they can do that, but if they ever lose that non-conformity.
So if they close down-
If you wanna change businesses, that's where we catch them, is when they change out tenants.
So there's not a six-months clause? If, if I have, uh-
If the same business is there indefinitely. But if you change businesses and change to a completely different kind of business, you lose that non-conformity.
And who determines that? Your department?
We do, yes.
Whether it's a blend, how can, you know?
Well, it's... Without applying it that way, you will never fix a problem.
It's just very uncomfortable.
It is.
This, this is the normal way of applying this in every city, every county I've ever had anything to do with in this state.
But put yourself in a person's position-
I understand.
That they've got this property that maybe they think is their retirement on a, on a major road, and yet now we're going to say to them, you got no parking, you got no, you got no value.
I understand, but I've been a real estate broker for thirty years in the state.
Here's the dilemma.
I understand.
That business was forced into that parking situation and compensated years earlier when they forelanded. So it's almost, every one of them is a individual, different case. I guess if I were the property owner, I would've been looking for parking. Once, the, should've taken that money and gone to parking. But then I do feel like you. I'm from the business world. I bought this place, uh, you know, they six-lane in Crescent City. Commissioner Pickens is in trouble.
Relatively four-lane.
It, it got you on the four-lane, same situation, same thing with me downtown.
Case in point.
I lost property, and they don't pay you for your business.
Yes, it, case in point. I mean, those are the kinds of issues you're supposed to, in a condemnation situation, fight out in court. We have encountered a few of those along State Road twenty through this process of widening there. Uh, and the next section I'm gonna get to here is, again, at least helping in that direction, but... Yeah, it's, it is a slight tightening of our code, but our code is next to worthless at this point in this section.
This is what this Commissioner would like. I'm very familiar with that, been in the situation a lot. FDOT is gonna pay you a hundred and twenty-five percent of your retail value of your property. With that being said, you're getting nothing for business. If you were there a hundred years and built up a clientele, you're getting nothing for it. But I would like your department to be as lenient as po, or creative as possible.
We are.
I really mean that. I don't want 'em calling the Commissioners piping mad, saying, you know, Mr. Hammonds is a devil with horns. I don't want it, you know?
I already have that reputation, so.
Unless he is, and that's fine.
Well, I'm serious.
No, I agree.
Because there are families that put their, their lifetime is spent in a geographic area. It's not, the system's not fair.
Uh, and I agree, dealing with the FDOT can be difficult. But, yeah, again, you can fight FDOT, but that's, that's what you gotta do in court. And FDOT has to pay for your defense, so.
Could we put a clause in here if it's, if it's happened based on some governmental take that-
If you would, go to the bottom of page one ninety-five in your packet.
You already got there?
Yep. Bottom of one ninety-five in your packet. What we're proposing to do here is any, if you'll go nine oh three oh eight, non-conforming structures or lots resulting from condemnation or acquisition by, of land by local, state, or federal government for right-of-way. For that matter, any other purpose, whether it was right-of-way or not, we would still throw it in this section. Any structure or parcel of land that is made non-conforming by the acquisition of land for a public right-of-way, AKA for me, a public purpose, shall be legally non-conforming under this code. Any subsequent development shall conform to current code. If the property owner seeks one or more variances to allow the development, redevelopment, or improvement, the circumstances of the condemnation acquisition shall be considered justification for hardship to the property owner. So it gives then the ZBA a green light to, to look at that idea as a hardship. Again, what happens in the court case between FDOT or the condemning agent- Again, what happens in the court case between FDOT or the condemning agency and the property owner? That's something we have no control over and
This is the first reading.
All we're, all we're concerned with is that it functions and we're slowly trying, we've got years of things that don't work right in this county. That we're trying to slowly corral, herd them, corral them to where we're at least moving closer to the code over time. Sir?
I believe I understand. You're trying to clean up for future use.
Yes, and we've got decades of that to clean up.
My question is Commissioner Lible owns a piece of property, such and such business been operating there. I purchased that business from him and I continue with the same business. Will I be hampered on this because it's still the same business because it changed ownership?
No, no. I mean, if it's, if it's continuous, it's not a problem.
Okay.
If you close, if you close up.
Change the business concept.
Okay.
Well, or the same type of business that has the same parking requirement. But you're not going to go from a and I'll give you a classic example. Some of you will know what used to be Guy's Lounge in East Palaca? Okay. Well, that was a bar. It closed. Subsequent owner converted the whole thing to a pharmacy. I don't, I'm not even sure that the pharmacy ever actually opened. But they converted to a pharmacy. They were conforming at that point because they had plenty of parking for the pharmacy. Then they came back in and said, we want to turn it back into a bar. And the answer is no, you can't. You can't make a bar out of that because you don't even come close to the parking requirement for a bar. So they lost their non-conforming status by changing it. And that's what we have to, we have to look at. It's fine for a, for a retail office type of use now. It's fine. But it's not going to make a bar.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or any other presentations, Mr. Hammond?
There is a couple of other things in this ordinance that I specifically want to draw your attention to. Middle of page one ninety-six, that's section six of this ordinance is strictly typo fixes. Bottom of that page on one ninety-six, then we get into administrative variances. You will remember, we presented this idea in the, in workshop and did talk about it. What we're doing is lengthening the process for an administrative variance from fifteen to thirty days. And we are making sure we have a more stringent notice requirement, okay? Per the board's request, certified notice to the abutting property owners and a sign on the property. So again, we'll have less of that argument that they weren't properly noticed. Secondly, the requirements that I use to grant administrative variance is going to be the same set of criteria that the zoning board of adjustment uses. Okay, so it either meets those criteria for a variance or it does not. And what it will allow me to do is if I'm using the same set of criteria, at least if somebody's saying, I just don't want it there and don't have any reasons for it not being there, then I can still go ahead and grant an administrative variance. It makes it more fair on both sides.
What's the reasoning then? I mean, if you can give the administrative, why would, what would push them to a regular variance meeting, to the full board?
There are a lot of things, there are a limited number of administrative variances that I can give. You can count them on both hands throughout the code. So if they want anything outside of that, or if it's something I cannot do, that's more than I can do.
Part of building codes or?
Well, let's take for example, under parking. I have the ability administratively to grant up to, I believe it's twenty percent reduction in parking spaces upon showing good cause. But if they want more than that, then they got to go to the ZBA.
So they originate in the Florida Building and Land Development Code?
No, this is just our land development code.
This is county only?
Yes, this is not a, this is not a building code issue.
Okay. All right.
But yes, this allows two things primarily. Like I said, we, we give better notice, we send stuff certified, we have a sign to the abutting property owners. We are not going out the two hundred feet or three hundred feet that we normally do. We're just doing the abutting property owners that will be affected. But by the same token, it's more fair to the property owner because the current rules that I have are so narrow that if anybody objects for whatever reason, I don't have a reason to approve it and I've been sending them on to the ZBA.
It makes efficiency. I'm good with it. That's all I'm looking for.
But it is a little longer.
Get them in your office and get them out of them with a smile.
Well, we're trying. We try. As best we can.
It's good.
Have a smile meter outside, did you? You have to, okay. Thank you, commissioners. Anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of this? Anybody in opposition? Okay, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, you better step on it. We got two million dollars waiting on us.
Two point five. Yeah, two million. Yeah, you're right. You're right.
We need to go represent quickly.
We're, they know we're coming. Let me assure you. Mr. Hammond, make it more amulated like.
Okay, this one is, this one is very simple change here. Bottom of page two oh two. It's hard to explain that section one down there at this point. Right now, the idea of a driveway is technically not covered under our definition of development in the code. Now, of course, we've been treating it that way. We require permit. So it's, it's a minor change to help both us and Public Works. And it's related to another code amendment that originally started with this group that will be here later, hopefully. So it doesn't have a lot of effect here, but it is relates to another code change we're working on with Public Works. Top of page two oh three. A very small change there that it has been a problem. Just trying to fix an old problem again. You notice I'm adding this idea of and electric lines?
They're underground now.
Well, there's an issue. Again, back in, I think, oh four or something, the board actually approved a subdivision east of Bostwick up there. Approved it. We actually released the bond. Everything else was done. And there ain't the first electric pole in that subdivision. It's caused a problem ever since. So again, we're, this is kind of filling a hole by putting it in here specifically in code that these other things, stormwater, streets, highways, water sewer, and electric lines have to be there in a plat. Okay? That's essentially all we're saying is that they need to be there.
Help me understand something. When we heard the case of FPNL Coral Farms, it was told to us that we couldn't regulate power lines and their right-of-ways and how they get to certain places.
We're not regulating a power company at this point. We're trying to say you, the developer, if you're going to build a big subdivision, you're going to put all of the necessary accoutrements of a subdivision in there. And electric is like high on the list.
What if the power company says, we don't want to go that route?
That's between the developer and them. We want to at least see some sort of contractual agreement. We just want to know that it's, they've taken care of it. Otherwise, it's incomplete for us.
These things come up at the contractors review board, don't they?
No, no. Again, this won't. This is an LDC issue, so. We see a type one plat, we expect certain things to be there, but electric is pretty much top of the list.
Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak in favor of this item? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, commissioners?
I'll move approval.
A proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Okay.
And as with
Side of Mr. Hammond?
As with all of these, this is the first reading. These will be scheduled in July. I believe for five oh five hearing, five oh one hearing for you. This is the last one. It's Code Amendment seventeen oh oh six. Specifically, we've talked about this numerous times that we had a discrepancy between well, let's just say that the, it has become clear that the new version of the Florida Building Code, which will go into effect at the first of January, will have, we've already read it, it will have the reference to or the requirement for a one-foot freeboard. Meaning whatever is designated as the base flood elevation that structures must be elevated to. Well, this freeboard requirement requires you elevate one foot above that. Okay, giving margin for error, if you will. And it is in the revised building code and will go into effect. And we've been telling you it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Well, it's, it's going to be here January first. And all we're trying to do is catch up with it. And we're doing two things. We have, because it's not defined anywhere else in code on page two oh nine, section one. We're defining what a modular home is. And if a modular home is on a frame, we want to apply the same requirements to it as we require of a mobile, which is elevate the bottom of the frame to or above the required elevation. And then secondly, any other structure then has to be elevated with the top of the lowest floor, which lowest floor is going to be the lowest habitable floor could be the bottom of your shower pan in a house. That's going to be your lowest floor typically. Or if you've enclosed a garage, it could be the bottom of that or the top of that slab in the garage. Lowest habitable floor at or above the required elevation. And a one-foot freeboard on top of that.
Well, Mr. Hammond, in my opinion, as the insurance guy for many years that I was, this is going to protect property in the future from flood. And we act like with the land being changed the way it is, it does affect neighbors' properties and it does flood. I do have a question though concerning this. What about apartment buildings? We're dealing with one or two bit family dwellings, but what if it's a, an apartment complex?
The requirement's still the same, even if it were a commercial building of any kind.
It doesn't matter.
Still got to be required. Those are conventional buildings. Well, I won't say that. It could be a modular. The elevation requirement is still going to be the same.
One foot above, okay.
Yeah. And what this does is, and why we're in a rush to do this is we don't want to be permitting things where people put it down here. And when we know six months from now, it's going to be up here.
Right.
We don't want them to be a non-conformity six months from now.
I agree. Okay, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the public wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
The elevation levels was a burn before. They changed.
Excuse me?
The elevation levels, the flood hazards. I mean, is that calmed down now? I remember when we discussed this. It seems like there was some conversation about the new
New flood maps?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't had too much squawking over it, but we do have occasionally still people come in and ask about it and they find out that the new maps may reflect their property out of a flood zone where it may have formerly been in one.
Right.
And vice versa. Sometimes they're in where they were, they were out, now they're in, or they were in, now they're out. We still have both of those issues going on.
Who makes the call on that? The final decision?
We interpret the map.
You interpret the map, your department?
The floodplain administrator, Don Peckham, makes the last. He's the one that sees it day in and day out and he's the one that makes it, makes the call. But if it's in the flood zone, we pretty much have to go, we have to interpret and deal with the map that we have. And the rules that go along with program. We had one recently that was kind of problematic. Somebody actually produced a letter from FEMA that said they were not in a flood zone. But that's not what our map says. Our map said they're in flood zone and we have to interpret it that way until and unless they get a LOMA, which is a letter of map amendment, which changes the map.
And they had a LOMA. I know this case.
No, in that case, they haven't produced one for us.
Thought the contractor brought one forward.
I don't think we have.
Okay.
Again, we may be talking about two different cases. We've had a couple of them, you know, a couple of old structures that in Matthew had to be demolished. Because they, they just simply had violated or the improvements that were necessary to fix them were going to be more than
I guess my point being, that's always been the burn. And you have to make that call, our department, but we don't set the criteria and we have to take the burn.
No. Again, these, these criteria, as you just saw, as I just referred to, is now going to be in the Florida Building Code. So it's state statute and we're still, that's, that's a state telling us, well, you got to administer it this way. So we got to follow state statute when we review plans and inspect. And follow the state statutes and all of our rules are patterned after the federal rules, FEMA. Those are all the costs of participating in the program and offering flood insurance. You got to enforce the rules, you got to enforce the map.
That should compensate us. With that, I move approval.
Well, hang on, I got a discussion. I want to bring one more thing up. My concern is bringing
We do have, Mr. Chairman, you do have a motion on the table?
I did. Need a second for your conversation.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
Somebody give us a second.
I'll second.
A proper second. Any further discussion? Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Again, my concern is I've seen this happen in a subdivision, not in this county. But they raise their property up to make that elevation requirement. And I can tell you that the neighbor is flooded out, the neighbor that's been there for forever. Now is having to deal with that. Is there any way that we can say maintain your water on your property if you're going, because we're telling them, you've got to raise this up now.
Well, there are ways you can deal with that. I mean, we, we haven't looked into it, but there are ways. I've been in other places where we prohibited fill and required stem walls. To elevate on stem wall or piers and prohibit fill. That takes care of part of that problem. But again, that can be done locally if the board wants to go there.
We don't have that kind of density.
No.
That's, that's for a very
But I remember helping a gentleman who, who did twenty-five acres of property and filled it up quite a bit. And, you know, you don't think that affects the surrounding land?
Yes.
You know what you say to that person, Mr. Chairman? The silver courts are open to you.
Well, I agree.
Really? I mean, there's no, there's no vehicle for us to deal with it.
No, I
Been through a bunch of these.
All right. We have a proper motion on the floor and a proper second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hammond. Item nine, appointments. Commissioners, why Commissioner Lible went to get his appointments, do you have any other appointments that going through this list?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, so we're waiting on Commissioner Lible, Ms. Frank, don't be leaving too early.
Susan, I may need you during county administrator comments. Don't leave.
You don't get to walk out. Commissioner Lible, while you were gone, no other appointment, no other commissioner had any appointments, so it's just you.
You guys better get busy on the fair board. The thirtieth is coming. In District Two, I want to appoint, for the fair authority, Dustin Kason.
Oh, good choice.
All right, and I don't have an address tabby yet on him, but I will All right, and I don't have an address tabby yet on him, but I will get it. And District Three, I'd like to reappoint Robert Revels.
Well, wait a minute. You can't do that.
Okay, tell me why.
Because District Three Commissioner is not here.
Well, I know that, but we, the 30th is coming.
We can't?
Counsel?
That is?
How do we handle it?
Well, I would have to look and see at the, the?
It's commissioner specific.
Is it, is it Burr District? When it was created?
I know how to handle it, if this is okay with you. The, Mr. Revels wishes to be reappointed at the appropriate time when we have a commissioner. All right?
Yeah, certainly put that in the record.
Yeah, let the record reflect.
Okay. All right, so we have Dustin Casey on the fair board. Commissioner Libley, you were also looking at for Mr. Townsend at the value adjustment board?
Yes.
While he's willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay. So we're ready to move that forward, so is that the end of your appointments?
That is.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept Dustin Casey on the fair authority and Tom Townsend on the value adjustment board.
I make a motion that we accept both.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard? Second by Commissioner Libley, is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Okay, we're going to go to county administrator. That was a phone call we're waiting on?
And that was a phone call saying we need to scoot in the next five or 10 minutes.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
Okay, I have two things quickly. First, you've heard from the sheriff several times about his roof. Most recently during the budget, his budget presentation. I received a phone call this morning, and apparently their roof is leaking and it has taken out lights in their main building. And they've requested that we consider moving up a capital roof repair of their building. I have a, they asking that we pay for it out of Better Place Plan, which I think is an appropriate expenditure. My question to finance is, they carry their own assets, do they not? So this would have to be a transfer to them? Or could we pay for it out of BPP?
It would still end up being a transfer.
Okay. Should you approve this, this will definitely necessitate a two-hearing nighttime amendment to the budget later.
Ms. Papel, Ms. Frank, will you pull that microphone and repeat your answer, please? So it can be on the record.
Okay, go ahead, can you, is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, what was, go ahead.
Repeat your answer to Ms. Papel so we get it.
Yes, we would, we did that when the supervisor of elections bought their voting equipment last year. We actually paid for it directly, but we keep the assets of the supervisor of election. Now, the sheriff keeps their own assets, so that would need to be a transfer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which we own the building, and this is not a repair, but a new roof.
It's a capital improvement to a county building, so it's allowable BPP cost. I chime in, please.
Actually, he's right, because the county owns the buildings, they only keep their own equipment.
Okay, so we own the building, so it wouldn't be a transfer.
Yeah, it's our jail.
Okay. So?
We heard that a lot this last year.
Yeah, but this is the administration building.
I know, I know, same thing, it's our administration.
With your approval, they would like us to fix the roof this year rather than wait till next year.
So we're going to get some estimates and come back before us?
Yes, yes.
Is that where we're going?
Oh, well, definitely, this is going to be over $100,000. So you're going to see it again, I just don't want to start the ball rolling.
But in the meantime, there's got to be emergency repair done.
They've got a repairman out there right now.
Okay.
And the dollar store have got trash cans on sale.
Yeah. So do I have consensus?
Yeah, I wanted to go there.
Consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, secondly, Ann and I met with Craig Coffey recently, and he's asked us to approach you to lock in some dates in the county administrator search. And Ann's got the particulars.
Going to put my other hat on right now. Change from benefits to the hiring and recruitment of the county administrator process. Craig Coffey with the Florida Association of County Managers has given us the tentative recruitment schedule. And we are asking you to consider to plug in your dates that when you would be available. And also, we will be reaching out to the hiring and selection committee to get them together and figure out those dates as well. I know you're all on time constraint right now, so perhaps we could let you have some time to review this, but we do want to keep on the time schedule.
And what you're looking from us is the dates that we would be available for proposed interview of the four finalists at that point?
Yes, these are suggested recommendations. Today, I checked how many applications we have, and we're up to 38, so you'll know. And Mr. Coffey and his staff have access electronically to all of these applications, so they can begin their process and get together with these committees. So when we go down, you'll notice most of it says week of, so we have to nail down some dates.
Ms. Allen, just for the record, I contacted you last week about the, one of the committee members asked me concerning if they were able to go out and compel people to apply. And your answer was yes during this process, they would still be able to do that. I mean, that was a big thing, why I appointed the person I appointed because of their far-reaching tentacles, if you will, in the state of Florida. And their knowledge of different people that might be suitable for Putnam County. So that, that would be still available.
That would be, just a word of caution, though, we did post it initially as open until filled, and then we received the, based on the meetings and input, to have a soft closing, which our applications will stop on June 16th, which is this Friday. And they will begin the review process. If they determine that they need more viable candidates, certainly they could change these dates. And if they make that decision to open it back up. And meanwhile, I mean, people can recruit and ask people to apply for positions. There's nothing wrong with that.
So what you need from us is on August, the week of August 7th, if this schedule maintains itself for us to pick two days out for that type of situation?
Yes, and then following the bottom part regarding the meeting with staff and other processes that'll be going on.
Okay, good deal. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this?
I'm not sure what the, what you're asking of us, other than August 7th. Everything, every other date really doesn't include us.
Right.
It's the week of August 7th, so we would need to know the date that the commission would like to have.
Perhaps the 10th and 11th, Thursday and Friday?
Is that what dates you'd like, August 10th?
I'm just throwing it up, it may make it easier for the candidates.
To do what?
To have it hooked to a weekend.
So 10th or the 11th?
Well, it's a two-day process.
Well, the 7th does that, you got a Saturday, Sunday, Monday the 7th.
Well, the 8th is a BOCC meeting.
Yeah, so we'd prefer to have two days where we could interact?
Yes.
Okay.
And that leaves them the weekend to be here.
Yeah.
Okay, 10th and 11th.
10th or 11th is fine.
I'm fine.
I'm fine with that.
Lock in those two days, get it on your calendars.
And that's what you're asking us for?
We are asking for dates from the board when they would be available, and we need two days, 10th and 11th is what I'm hearing.
I think you got it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, county attorney, Mr. Manning?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Clerk of the court?
We have nothing to say, Commissioner.
Okay, I do want to say welcome to Anita over here to our left. She's a chatterbox and would love to talk on, now I'm teasing. But we do thank you for being here, and she's one of our new people that are helping out for a while. So we thank you in learning. And Susan, we thank you for being over there. We appreciate it, we try not to ask you too many questions. Commissioner, comments to my left, Mr. Pickens?
I'm good, y'all need to make a meeting, or we need to make a meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Goddard?
I, I have none.
I'd like to congratulate Susan, she's already said more than John Jones did in 10 years.
Okay, hearing of the comments?
Very confident, he didn't need to say anything.
We are going to water management, and Stacy and Stacy are going with us. We got to be very careful of our conversation.
One more thing, I would like to just give a shout out for a, some respect to Katina Flynn, our longtime volunteer firefighter coordinator that we laid to rest this past Saturday. It was a very nice service. The Putnam County Fire Service showed up and the city of Palatka. And she had, we sent her off in a very grand way, and she deserved every bit of it.
You know, since you mentioned that, putting her casket in the back of the brush truck was very moving to me.
She rode from Palatka to Melrose in the brush truck.
And her husband followed behind in the, in the fire truck and the children. So it, it was very emotional to see that going down the road. But you're right, it was a very good send-off.
She was very committed to us.
Was.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Libley, for sharing that.
Yes, on, on the point of the, where y'all are headed next, just remind you that, that this is not an advertised meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, so to avoid any sort of sunshine violations, I would ask that your presence be merely there as a show of support and not have discussions.
I'm on the list to present.
Well?
As a, as a, as meant myself.
Yeah, I, I think if we've got just one person, that's okay. But any additional discussion from any of the other members of the board would create a potential sunshine violation. So just want to remind you of that before we head over there.
Since Commissioner Libley's on the list to present, then we'll, we'll defer to Stacy and Stacy for any other additional comments at that point. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.